Okay, on Article Six, Cranberry Village Transfer of Funds.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Six as set forth in the warrant and to transfer the sum of $262,831.40 from the town stabilization fund for the purpose of reimbursing residents of Cranberry Village for the amount they paid to the town for operation of the Cranberry Village wells prior to June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the treasurer to pay said appropriation to the Cranberry Village Residents Association, incorporated with the like amount to revert to free cash to be transferred at a later date to reimburse the stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article Six. Do we have a presentation on that at all?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yep, Mr. Corbo.
Thank you. So for the information of town meeting members, the motion that was made by the chair is different than the proposed motion in your warrant, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear. I don't see that on the screen, what we're doing here. So for many years, the Cranberry Village well has operated via an enterprise fund, which was funded by fees paid by the residents of Cranberry Village. Last year, you voted to authorize special legislation to transfer control of that well over to the residents of Cranberry Village, but at that time, we didn't account for the fact that the enterprise actually had a surplus remaining in it. So as we get to now approaching fiscal year 2024, you'll see that as part of the budget, we did not set a budget for the Cranberry Village enterprise, and instead, as part of this article, we are discontinuing that enterprise fund. It will zero out as of July 1st of 2023. According to the Department of Revenue and Massachusetts General Laws, when an enterprise fund is closed and there is a surplus, that surplus goes into the general fund of the town and is available for appropriation later in the year when free cash is certified. However, in order to be able to settle our issues with Cranberry Village, the select board is proposing a temporary transfer from the stabilization fund to pay Cranberry Village in fiscal year 2023, and then to reimburse the stabilization fund in fiscal year 24 when free cash becomes certified. So in voting on this article, which will require a two-thirds vote, you're going to do two separate things. The first thing is to close the enterprise fund, which is no longer needed, and then the second thing is to appropriate the remaining balance of that fund, which is $262,831.40 from the stabilization fund temporarily until that can be reimbursed at the next town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corbo. Uh, Mr. Belvin.
Robert Belvin, 26th Great Street. I'm glad I came prepared. I presented this to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator when everyone was saying, "Oh, no, you can't do that. It's our money. It's our money." Okay? It's the town's money, and the law says it goes into the general fund. So I didn't hear anything about in that new motion that was just given where that money is directed into the general fund. I think it should be actually stated in the question that the money is being directed into the general fund. So I actually made my own motion based on what was given to us, all right, where I made a motion to move to remove the language from the parentheses "for the purpose of reimbursing residents of Cranberry Village" for amounts they paid to the town for operation of the Cranberry Village wells prior to June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the treasurer to pay said funds' balance to the Cranberry Village Residents Association, Inc., end quote, to remove that and then put in its place, placed in the general fund per Mass. General Law 44, subsection 53F 1/2, and recommended by the Division of Local Services Guidelines Release, which I have a copy of that also here. So I'd like to put that in because that really directs the money into the general fund by law.
Yeah, Mr. Corbo. I think it would be helpful if we could get the motion that was read by the chair up on the screen so people could see it, and then we might be, we can, if Mr. Belvin is so willing, adapt his motion to the motion that was actually made. I understand what you're trying to do. It just doesn't match up.
We just want to make it clear how your amendment changes the main motion. Okay?
I understand that. I just want to make sure that that money is put in the general fund, like I said, and like the selectman and the town administrator received from me this actual document, all right? So this should have been done beforehand. I shouldn't have to stand up here at town meeting and say, "Guess what? The money's got to go in the general fund." You can't just turn around and say, "Oh, here you go. We're going to violate the law and submit it to Cranberry Village." You can't do that. I want to make sure it's legal.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That's not what's being done.
What was presented in here, that's what was being said, that we're going to close this count, okay, and that money is going to be given to Cranberry Village Residents Association. That's what is said here in this warrant. I understand the chairman up there made a second motion that's different than what we have in here. We can't see that motion. I worked on what we had here.
Okay, so that's why I think it's even better that we make sure that we make it clear what that updated motion was, so that we can untangle whether or not it needs to be amended, or if you're okay with the way that it was actually stated.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
So to break it down for everyone who may not be able to see it clearly, the first part of this is to approve Article Six as set forth in the warrant, which the first part of that, as I said earlier, is to close the enterprise fund. And as a result of closing the enterprise fund, the remaining balance goes into the general fund automatically by operation of law, and in the fall, gets certified as part of the town's free cash. So the second part of this proposed motion is to take from the town's stabilization fund an amount equal to that remaining balance, which is $262,831.40, so that that money can be paid to the residents of Cranberry Village, and then at a subsequent town meeting, it will be an appropriation from free cash to replenish the stabilization fund.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yep, Mr. Belvin.
What's written up there is different than what's here. What you're doing is you're violating the rights of the public to know before town meeting here what you're voting on. They've added this new section coming right here and saying, "Guess what? What's here? Yeah, we don't want it. We're going to change this." All right? It's a different figure. All right? It's a different place for the money coming from. Okay? Clearly, they're trying to do an end around because they screwed up. So now we have to go ahead and fix it. My language, using the verbiage that we have, fixes it. It goes into there. Everything else from the warrant, Article Six as set forth in the warrant here, needs to go. All that other stuff there needs to go. We were never notified as a public entity here, as legislative body members, that this is a new intent of using money. Okay? This can't be done. And for town council to sit up there and try to say, "Yeah, this is okay to do," I don't think it is. Okay? There are other ways of doing this, and I gave those other options to the Board of Selectmen, all right, through an email. There's other options. This here coming to town meeting now is wrong. It's wrong. It's an end around, and you need to be notified, and that's illegal. You can't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. We have another comment. Actually, hold on one sec. So we have an amendment on the floor that's been made. It has not been seconded, and we haven't opened it for debate yet. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, so now on the amendment debate. Mr. Belvin, you've already spoken once, so this would be your second time, just so you're aware. Okay.
I understand it. I just want to make sure people understand. All right, there are rules for a reason. Okay? And the rules clearly say we have to be notified seven days in advance of what the warrant is. Okay? To come in here with something different than what the warrant says, a little minor modification, okay, fine. This is a lot. This is taking it from a total separate source than we were originally told. So this is wrong, and I think town council should speak up, and I'm asking him. Okay? Is it right for town meeting to be notified prior to town meeting about a sum of money different than what's actually put up on the screen that we're supposed to be notified seven days in advance? Isn't that true?
I can't necessarily ask him to speak to whether or not it's right, but whether it's legal.
It's legal. That's what I'm asking. Is it legal?
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
So this comes down to what is the difference between a warrant article and a motion? According to decisions of Massachusetts courts and town meeting time, the warrant is for the purpose of warning the voters of the broad subject matter that you're going to be voting on.
Hold on, just let him finish.
No, I'm going to finish.
Let him finish.
You brought up town meeting time, and we work on Roberts' Rules of Order.
Mr. Moderator.
I've already ruled on that, and he has the floor, so, yep.
According to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a town meeting warrant needs to only notify the voters as to the broad subject matter of what is anticipated to be voted on, with specifics to be filled in by motion at town meeting. With this particular article, the voters were warned that the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund would be closed and that the remaining balance would be appropriated for the purpose of reimbursing the residents of Cranberry Village. Like many other monetary articles, no specific sum of money was included in the warrant article, and no specific funding source was included. Those are appropriate items to fill in by motion, which was done by the select board here, and in my opinion, this is proper town meeting procedure, and the original main motion was appropriately before the body.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator. He is incorrect. Under proposed motion, it has a fund of $275,210.59. In the warrant, there is an amount here that says, "Here you go. This is what we're doing." All right? And it says, under the proposed motion that's here, that we were notified of, the money's getting, the remaining balance of the enterprise fund is going to be given back. So this is the issue that we have. We were notified of an amount here in the warrant. It's different than what's up there. Okay? It's coming from a different source than what was originally notified here of. It's totally different.
Mr. Belvin, what is your issue with the source? So what source is being mentioned in the article here, and how are we changing that source, and how is that not acceptable to you?
State law says that when you close out an enterprise fund, that money goes into the general fund. Not my words, that's state law.
Hmm.
And we get that approved through town council, that that's state law.
I believe that's what's being proposed here, right? Am I wrong that we are allowing that process to happen?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That is absolutely correct. The remaining balance in the fund is going into the general fund of the town, and you are being asked to make a separate appropriation from stabilization to pay the residents of Cranberry Village. In my opinion, this is completely consistent with guidance from the Division of Local Services.
I disagree for the mere fact that they're asking money come from the stabilization fund, and we were never notified it was coming from the stabilization fund.
Keep it down, please.
We were only notified that the remaining balance was going to come from the enterprise fund and go to the Cranberry Village. That's what we were told in the warrant, what we were notified of. Now you're telling us something different here, and that is different than what we have in our warrant.
So you still haven't explained how that materially affects the decision.
There should be here, two separate warrant articles. The first warrant article, to close out the account. Here we cut and dry. We close out the count, the money goes into the general fund. That's what it says. That's what the Division of Local Services says. That's what is supposed to happen. You want to do something else? That should be a separate warrant article to say, "Hey, we want to pay this money out for something else." It should be two separate warrant articles, not one.
But the warrant article does mention both activities, right? It mentions closing out the fund, and it also mentions providing that remaining balance to the Cranberry Village residents.
Does not say that the money's going into the general fund, and that's what's supposed to happen. What it's looking like is the treasurer's going to go ahead, and she's going to close out that account and write a check to them and say, "Here you go. Here's your money from this account because we closed it out."
But that is not what the warrant article, sorry, that's not what the motion that was made says. The motion actually corrects that to make it clear exactly what's happening there. So I'm failing to understand.
We were never notified seven days in advance, and it's wrong.
But they weren't notified about your changing it seven days in advance.
Okay, no shouting. Further debate on the amendments. Is everybody standing, speaking on the amendment? Okay, so you were there first.
So Brenda McCall, 34, I forgot my address all this time. 34 Kennedy Drive in Kava. I am the president of the Cranberry Village Residents Association. So I'm going to assume that that number, the $262,831.40, is less than the $275 because you guys have paid our bills for the water. So that's why that number is less than. So, and just to clarify for everybody, and we talked, this should have been done all last year. There was a mishap in what actually came to town meeting. So that money physically actually came from the residents of Cranberry Village. We overpaid our water bill every month since you guys, since Kava took the wells back around 1983, '84-ish. So just like any person in this room, if you overpay a utility bill, if the husband pays the electric bill and the wife pays the electric bill because you're not communicating, you're going to have a credit balance. You're either going to say, "I want the money back," or you're going to leave it and draw off of it. We can't do that with $262,000. That money goes in a separate account through Cranberry Village. When it comes from the town of Kava, it'll go into a separate account strictly to do nothing but maintain the wells. Those wells only produce water to the 280 homes in Cranberry Village. Town doesn't pay for it. Town doesn't maintain it. The balance in the warrant was $275,000 when this was printed. It's now $262,000 because the money comes out of that from the town of Kava to pay those bills. They can't draw a check off of it because that account, you can't write a check. So everything, and correct me if I'm wrong, that comes out of that account is done by journal entries, is what I'm assuming, paying back the different departments and then writing the checks to who they need to go to. And that's all this is doing. That's all we're asking for, is just, we want our wells back, we want the money that goes with them, our money that paid it. The verbiage is however they have to do it to get that to happen. My understanding is this change came about at 4:00, 4:15 this afternoon because of new information that was given. So however it has to be worded, just word it because Cranberry Village residents want to move on. I've been dealing, we've been dealing with this since 2019, and let's put this to rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold your applause. I think you were next, sir.
Yeah, Steve DeHurst, 52 Forest Street, former FinCom member. I've been coming to these town meetings for more than 30 years now, and so has Mr. Belvin, or at least it feels like it. And this is not a rubber stamp committee. This is the body that runs the town. We're allowed to make decisions. We're supposed to. We live here, we're registered voters, we're involved in the town. We make changes like this, minor changes to the execution, not the intent of an article, all the time. And speaking to another extraneous thing that has come up often, town meeting time does not supplant Roberts' Rules of Order. If you read Town Meeting Time, first of all, make sure you have a lot of coffee because it's not exciting. It's a bunch of rulings under Massachusetts state law about the conduct of town meetings.
I'm going to hold you there because I want to try to keep you focused on the article at hand, right? I will address that, though, and with...
So on the motion to amend, there's nothing wrong with it, but it was not necessary.
Thank you. In the middle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary LaBoa, 8 Lincoln Circle, Cranberry Village, the treasurer of the Cranberry Village Residents Association, just speaking on the amendment quickly, and the whole seven-day notice, and you can't bring this to the floor. This is a working meeting. This is, once a year, the people in Kava get together and do the business of this town on this floor. Things are changed on this floor all the time. This is nothing new. Money amounts change, wording on verbiage changes, procedural issues are found and corrected. I think the town council has made it abundantly clear that when the enterprise fund is closed, the funds go into the general fund. So I think that's pretty clear, so I would like to make a motion that we move the vote on the amendment.
Okay. Okay, so I just, I really want to make sure that everyone's clear on what the amendment is here, so I'm going to read it word for word as Mr. Belvin has presented it to me, and then if Mr. Belvin would like, town council can provide some clarification if necessary, and you can either agree or not agree with that. But let me just read it as he has it written here so that we know what we're voting on here. So the original motion is on the screen. This is the amendment. "I move to remove the language 'for the purpose of reimbursing residents of Cranberry Village' for the amounts they paid to the town for operation of the Cranberry Village wells prior to June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the treasurer to pay said fund balance to the Cranberry Village Residents Association, Inc. And in its place, placed in the general fund per MGL Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2, and recommend, recommended by the Division of Local Services Guidelines Release, April Mr. Corbo, would you have anything to add to that to clarify it? And Mr. Belvin, would you permit him to do so? Okay, he's willing to listen.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just for the purpose of putting this in proper form, should the body wish to approve it, I would suggest that the motion as amended read as followed, as follows. "I move that the town vote to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of GL Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2, ceasing the operation of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund as of July 1, 2023, and for the remaining balance to be placed in the general fund per MGL Section 44, I'm sorry, Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2, and recommended by the Division of Local Services Guideline Release, April 21, April 2021."
Does that work for you, Mr. Belvin, or would you like to have it in writing?
Is that going to be the sole motion, not including anything else on here?
That's the...
That is correct. That would, if you choose to adopt what I just read, that would be the sole motion.
That's my sole motion because that covers everything of what I want to do.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, Mr. Corbo.
So to be clear, if you vote yes on the amendment, the portion of this that appropriates funding from stabilization to reimburse the residents comes out, and all you're voting to do is to close the fund and have the money go into what will ultimately be free cash.
So...
Okay, yeah, in the middle.
So that means if we, if they vote yes on this, Cranberry Village does not get their funds back?
Not in fiscal year 2023. That is correct. There would have to be a subsequent meeting.
So we're going to come back here next year, right? We would have to come back here, put this on a warrant for next year, and vote again, which means the town of Kava will hold on to the wells. We won't get the wells for another whole year? Am I understanding that correctly?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. This has nothing to do with the transfer of the wells. This is only the funding.
No, I know, but we don't have the wells yet. We don't have the, we can't run the wells. We don't have the wells in our name 100% because the funding is holding that up. So the bottom line is, this one right here, this article, the way it was amended... So the bottom line is, this one right here, this article, the way it was amended, gives, if we vote yes on what everybody sees on the screen, Cranberry Village, if, if the people so vote, would get those funds at the end of fiscal year twenty-three. If the amendment goes through, and I, I believe you worded it, you're right, if that emotion goes through, then we don't get our money and we would have to come back here again. Okay, so I'm going to ask everybody here to please vote no on the amendment?
What's the point of order?
She can't turn around and ask people how they feel or what they want.
She's not, she's not asking them. She's just advising, she's, she's stating her, her point, her standpoint. Yep.
I mean, it's confusing to people. This is confusing to people.
Guys, keep the conversation amongst yourselves down, please.
There's, there's people out here that, that didn't realize if they voted on the amended motion that that meant that the funds wouldn't transfer. So I just wanted clarification that with the amended motion, no funds transfer. With the emotion, with the motion that's on the screen, the funds will transfer at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Mr. Bellman, you've already spoken twice, so I'm going to entertain this gentleman over here. Do you, do you have a question specifically?
To the town council.
Okay, I'll allow a question.
Stop, let him...
Okay.
Could I please ask the moderator and town council here, is there a reason, considering in Article Six that this existing warrant required or requested that the funding and the renification were combined? If I understand the issue that was brought up, he felt that it did not justify the money being put in the general fund. And I, my question is, is that only half of what's in here? And is it possible to add beyond what was done here, the other half of that warrant found in Article Six to the revised statement that was just read by Mr. Corbo?
So, I mean, so, do you, do you understand, Ms. Corbo? I'm a little confused because it sounds like you're trying to turn the amendment back into the original article?
No, what I was, well, my understanding of what was said was initially, the complaint was, one, that there was a difference in value. It was a two-part issue that was brought up. So the issue has since been spoken that it was due to some payment that was made that offsets the difference between the two seventy-five we have in our warrant and the two sixty-two that's on the page. The second part of it was that, as I understood it, that the money was not stated to go into the general fund, but potentially could just be a transfer from that account directly, and he felt that that was not in compliance with Mass Law. At that point, if I'm correct, Mr. Corbo here had brought up the idea of including that law, that it would be brought into the general fund. Is it then possible with that half to then also add the second half here where it says that the reimbursement would take place? Is it possible to take that verbiage and add it to what Mr. Corbo said and still be in compliance with the complaints issued? Could we combine the two?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So in my opinion, when the town votes to cease operation of the enterprise fund, as of July first, whatever balance is in that fund automatically goes into the general fund. There is no need to add additional language to the vote to have it do that.
So my question, with that being said, that cessation, sorry, it's late, I'm getting tired, but that cessation of the fund automatically taking place, the second half here involved the reimbursement of this statement. Was the issue, I thought the issue was just that it did not state that it would go into the general fund and then be reimbursed. I thought that's what we were trying to accomplish. I didn't know if we could do that with verbiage or would that offset. I'm not familiar with that exact law, and that's why I'm asking that question.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So what, what we're proposing is that the remaining balance goes into the general fund and that you temporarily take money out of stabilization to reimburse Cranberry Village with the expectation and the representation of the select board that at the next town meeting, we'll put it back into stabilization.
Right, so we're asking to borrow from the stabilization fund of this town to reimburse the Cranberry Village for their overpaid water bills. I'm still not sure the, the issue that was with the warrant and the, the mention of the general funds, could we not just mention the general funds and therefore cover the conditions of the amendment as that member brought up and move on with the complete?
Well, the amendment only mentions the fault, the funds going back to the general fund per Massachusetts general law, does not mention in any way, shape, or form transferring those funds to the residents.
Is that something that would be agreeable?
Mr. Bellman?
Moderator, through you to town council, are there other ways to transfer the money through a purchase and sale agreement with the property, which has not happened yet, all right, and utilizing town funds for that because the town authorized the Board of Selectmen to make those decisions? There are other ways of skinning the cat, and I'm not, it's not about giving your money back or not, it's about how it's done, and it's done legally, okay? Through the purchase and sale agreement, that could be done. Is that correct? Mr. Corbo?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I don't understand the question. That's not what's being voted on here by town meeting. Yes, we're going to have a purchase and sale agreement.
So, so as it stands, the, the amendment does not include the provision to transfer the funds to residents of Cranberry Village. Yep, in the middle.
And warrant, thirty-two Kennedy. So as you stated on the amendment, if people vote no on this question, what happens to that money? The city, the town of Carver keeps it again, or what goes on with that?
So if somebody votes no, so right now, we're talking about the amendment. So if no, if somebody votes no on the amendment, then the amendment does not pass, and we go back to the original motion as written on the screen.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yep.
The question?
All right, all right, all right, keep it down, keep it down.
Move the question.
Okay. All right. So with that said, on the amendment, do, do we have the amendment written up?
Yeah. Yeah, but I just want people to realize. Oh, my God. Do you know how many people we've lost? They're just finally out of here. Lost at least... This isn't late now. She's trying to type it in. Come on, can we just do a voice vote? Can we just do a voice vote on amendments?
I want to, I want to have it on the screen so people can see it. They know what it is, yeah.
Do that, we're going to circumvent.
I know. Come on. Do a voice vote.
Yeah, for what you wish for.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Good point, good point.
Be nice if we... It's about like eleven o'clock.
Quiet down, please. Quiet down. We're ready to continue here. All right, we're, we're about to put this to a vote. Do you, like, you've already spoken twice, so I, I can't allow any more debate, but do you have a question about the, the article?
Just looking for some clarification.
Okay.
Just to clarify that the, the, yes, that what we're about to vote on is the amended motion from Mr. Bellman that will not give the money back to Cranberry Village, correct?
My understanding is, is, is yes, that, that this does not include the provision to provide the funds back to Cranberry Village.
Okay, so that's what we're voting on, if, if...
We're voting on the amendment, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Before we, before we get underway on voting on this, Mr. Bellman, I want you to read the screen, and I want you to authorize that this is the amendment that you would like to... So basically, this would replace the language in the original motion. Oh, can we get it on the screen, please? Oh, okay. So can it, can we scroll, or? Sorry, it's not all fitting on the screen.
To revoke its acceptance of the provisions of general law, Chapter Forty-four, Section...
We're just missing the year at the end, so it says April 2021 at the end.
Section Fifty-three F. and one-half, ceasing operation of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund as of July first, 2023, and for the remaining balance to be placed into the general fund per Mass General Law, Section Fifty-three and a half, and to recommend by the Division of Local, as recommend, it should say, as recommended by the Division of Local Services, released April, I forget the end of the date, I don't have my paper with me, 2021. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to strike the word "and" before the word "recommended" and replace it with "as." So we've made the adjustment, and everybody, please quiet down. So on the motion to amend Article Six to replace the original language in the motion with the language to revoke its acceptance of the provision of GL, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three, F. and one-half, ceasing operation of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund as of July first, 2023, and for the remaining balance to be placed in the general fund per MGL, Forty-four, Section Fifty-three and one-half, as recommended by the Division of Local Services, guideline released April 2021. This will require a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the voting now. And again, it'll be thirty seconds. Okay, go ahead and close the vote. Okay, go ahead and close the vote. Wait, why is it saying failed? Okay, yeah, okay, because the amendment failed, but... It's showing percentages instead of numbers? Okay, so, all right. But the motion fails with eighty-four and a half percent no and fifteen percent yes. It, it should normally show numbers.
I like that.
Okay, everybody, quiet down. We see some people moving towards the door and just, I want everybody to keep in mind that we do need to maintain a quorum of 150 because of bonded indebtedness. The issue that we're working through right now is that, that the voting system did not display the counts. We actually need the counts to record it in the town clerk's records, and also, we just really want it to be consistent so that there's no confusion from vote to vote. Yeah, I understand, but, yep, I understand that the math can be done, but I also wanted to see if we can make an effort to make it consistent.
All right, I just did it.
Been walking out for like an hour now.
Did you see all my answers? Same one that Peter commented on? Go answer, interesting. Do it, because all the restaurants... I answered. I love their points. I know the name, but... By the time we got to it, it was just like A, A. It looks like he's filming us right now?
Yeah.
So I wanna ask him. How many people? Don't tell me they're leaving.
How you doing? How's the hip feeling? Smart, inventive idea. Scanning for a while.
This day is pretty much over. All the kids try, yeah, I mean, the youngest. Hottest thing is picking them up like when they want to come home.
Yeah. You've read about 40 articles here.
Oh, I drive, I pick them up. I pick them right after the storm. He was gonna do that. Soon pick them up.
He's here. Yeah, I saw him.
Later, I'll tell him I'll pick them up.
Yeah, he's here.
My daughter, Amy. I'm nine. Tried to do that, I tried to do something. Not to the point where I wasn't... About whether or not they could be bits on the table. It was like, what am I doing here?
Shirley Jones.
I went to the part, and I don't know if I had the time.
No, it is Shirley.
Okay. It's a difference.
I was thinking Shirley Valley. Gets fed up with her husband and takes off to Greece and doesn't come back.
Done?
Is, almost.
Diego.
Dad?
Ireland, my dad. No, Brad's in, uh... Diego, and then went through a breakup, not in psycho, basically over Christmas. I just need a hug, so my friend... Good place to stay. What, at Rock? Yep. San Diego's a big April take.
Okay, everybody. We're just gonna, we're gonna try this again and for the sake of consistency, so that we can hopefully have it show the actual vote counts here. If it doesn't show the actual vote counts and it shows the percentages again, we'll go ahead and do the math as everybody has recommended, as long as there's no arguments against that. So, again, on motion to amend Article 6 to revoke its acceptance of the provisions of GL, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and one half, ceasing operation of the Cranberry Village Enterprise Fund as of July 1st, 2023, and for the remaining balance to be placed in the general fund per MGL 44, Section 53 and one half, as recommended by the Division of Local Services guideline released April 2021. We'll go ahead and open the voting and give you 30 seconds.
Not open.
It's not open yet. Yep, open the voting, please. Okay, the voting is now open. Okay, close the voting. All right, so...
I like the first numbers better.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We lost...
All right, so we seem to be having challenges, so unless, unless anybody objects, we're gonna go ahead and do the math on this and then announce the vote.
That's fine.
Perfect. Doesn't matter, we get the numbers in the first one. Use it now because you vote.
There was a whole application process.
Doesn't equal what the 82...
It's called the... Please center, because that was a guy that... We've always put $10,000. By knowledge, they've ended that program. They're not doing, they're not thinking about doing more substantial grant.
Aaron, have any, have any of the other towns voted yet, or are we the first?
The elementarys.
Okay, so we have 258 no and 24 yes, so the amendment fails.
Can we lose the question now?
All right, left question.
Now we gotta vote on the article as a...
Okay, so back to the main motion. And we'll go ahead and put that back up on the screen.
Does display raw percentage?
Actually, they said, you know what? And I'm really... This is more...
Yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna get sad. I'm trying to find the email that they sent off.
Morning.
Just like last minute.
When do you leave?
Pizza was white.
It's been a long day.
I was getting any answers or a report of food.
Last week.
Yeah, I think we want...
The conversation.
Make everywhere?
Got me driving, drive on here. Ask everyone.
Is he practicing?
A little bit.
So they're...
Out on Federal Road?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's federal and harbor, right? Where he...
I play the drums.
Really wrestling. More like the little cafe is, at the top of the hill.
Send it to you, I'll send you the... Size of the drums is good. You can learn the drums a lot.
It's so funny. So you basically drive by my... I do.
What's the number of the budget? Give the number in the budget.
See you out my window. Yep. So I chose the one that's by itself. Could've had one that was over here on the... I'd love... It's a picture?
I'll be, son, I, but our numbers are up all the way. I never have kids.
And I was like, I'm like, what do you guys do?
That's last year they enrolled a class of like 20 or 29. So it's hard to see numbers as good a number. Now I've seen it voted. One day he decided he wanted to start.
In the attic. Oh, yep, not quite like up there.
Made us think about it. Was it 83? Was it up by six? It was up by six. So that, that, we were actually probably down for you. We probably, it's probably skipped a year there, so if you go back to year before, well, try there. You gotta be able to sit for a long time and practice.
How nice is that? Like, okay, thank you. They do, they do like team milling stuff. Like, I don't know where I am right now. Form comes into play.
She done her back end?
Okay, so what, what do you see? See when you see that gentle?
Where's he right?
Well, you know, they can both do it on test.
Right, you can go behind like this. Right, here it is. 22, 281. In '23, it was 14. That's $85,000, I don't know how much the number was on.
You think jump out?
Kid in me, plus, plus general costs. 22, 630 million. So the assessment's actually saying...
23 should be inside, yeah, 23 feet. It's like, I don't know who made it, but I saw it and I was like... Oh, guys, oh, yeah, there's no date on there. Like, that was my thing. How, how would you know?
Eight was down. So it's right now, 1335 is the same as it was two years ago. Down because your enrollment came back. Enrollment came down, then went back, then actually went back.
Me and my best friend Paula showed up to...
Let me see. The way they're writing it.
That is super fun. So I posted, I was like, who wore it best? Just kidding, which is so amazing. I saw. Did you see the, um, the things they did on the doors? All the kids' names, like a bouquet of flowers and other doors out there. All the students' names, assuming it's home room. He wanted a roommate, right?
Afraid our accounts are not set up like this.
She's on the news.
Could it get set up like this?
Video clip of her...
Yes, it would do. I am now, we reach towards the system is not helping us.
Okay, sorry, the, the issue is, is that the system is wanting to continue to show those raw percentages. We didn't want to confuse people, but in the interest of time, we're just gonna continue the voting and we're gonna rely on the percentages versus showing the actual count numbers. We'll do the math to record it in the, the minutes and also announce the, the numbers as we go. If there are seven voters who challenge the vote, we will go to a hand count. So unless there's any objections, everybody thinks that's fair, then we'll continue.
Go with the percentages.
Okay.
Can calculate.
All right, on Article 6, the original motion for the Cranberry Village transfer of funds, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to that motion and we will open it for debate. Mr. Belvin.
So here we go with Mass. General Law again. Chapter 44, Section 62, penalties for violation of provisions of this chapter by officials. One year in jail, $1,000 fine for everyone.
Mr. Belvin, can you, can you please articulate what it is that you believe is being done wrong, instead of, instead of claiming that there's gonna be penalties for what we're about to do? Can you explain what we are doing wrong? What, what is not legal?
The law clearly says the money has to go into the general fund. It's not labeled as general fund. Also, the, the change in the wording is different than what was in the warrant that was printed. It should've been two separate articles.
Yes, but the, but the motion, but the motion that was made does state that the money will go back to the general fund first.
We were never notified that prior to town meeting, we were notified...
I don't see how that materially changes the, the spirit of what is being done here. Okay. Yes, sir?
Padmaha, Nine Redtail Lane, Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council, is there anything illegal about the original motion and the way it was written?
Mr. Corbo.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, no, in my opinion, the original motion, the way it was written, is consistent with Mass. General Law.
I'd like to move the question, please.
All right, I, I have a point of order. Hey, keep down, please.
Who created the verbiage? Was it Town Council that created that verbiage? Because we just asked him to turn around and justify his own verbiage in an article that was brought to us tonight.
He, he made, he did not make the motion. The motion was made by someone else.
But he made the verbiage.
Right, so Town Council, as part of his... Right, so Town Council, as part of his responsibilities, can advise the select board on the wording of the warrant or on the wording of motions. And Town Council can also help all of you in this room with wording your amendments to motions here on town meeting floor, and that has been done time and time again. So there's, there's no, there's no deviation from typical procedure here.
Just, but he just, just asked him a question. Is there anything illegal? Well, was he gonna say no? Yeah, he says no, there's nothing legal, because guess what? I'm the one that wrote it. So why would I turn around and say?
Okay, this isn't a court of law, so I'm not, I'm not going to question his motives.
Move the question, please.
All right.
Deb Giswoldo, two zero four Main Street. I would like to say that we pay KMP to advise us and counsel us. If we make a mistake here on the floor of town meeting, the Attorney General's office will kick the darn thing back. This is ridiculous, and I please make a motion to move this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, hold your applause, please. So, so seeing no additional motion to the mic and no hands raised, we're gonna go ahead and open the vote. Please open the vote. Please, please open the vote. And we're gonna give you 30 seconds.
You know, but they. Set it off and read. False back to it. But let's not do that.
Sir, we have a vote in progress.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
It's too late.
Article that we're voting on is not the original article in the, in the warrant, so shouldn't the revised article be what's on the screen?
There is no revised article.
There's no, so the article wasn't revised. It, the, the motion was, was written differently from, from, or the motion was presented differently from what was written in the, the warrant. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close the vote. Okay, so the motion passes with eighty-six percent for, about fourteen percent against. Hold on one second, let me just announce the vote. Okay, so with, so that's two hundred and forty-one, yes, and thirty-eight, no. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider Article Six.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider Article Six.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to reconsider Article Six. This, this motion requires a two-thirds vote, and it is debatable since the main motion was debatable, and it can only be made once per our bylaws. So we'll go ahead and open the motion to reconsider for debate.
Mr. Moderator, I just would like people to know that a, a no vote to reconsider will prevent this whole article from coming up again at town meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Puts it to bed.
I'm gonna put it up.
Forever.
Okay, with no motion to the mics and no hands raised, we'll go ahead and open the vote, and we'll give you 30 seconds. Guys, keep it down while people are voting, please.
Eighty-six oh three.
Okay, the motion to reconsider does not pass with eighty-six against and fourteen percent for.
Thirty-four to thirty-eight. Two thirty-four, no, thirty-eight.
All right, let me, let me announce the votes, Mr. Jermaine. I appreciate the help, but.
She's over here doing it. I mean, she's.
I know, but it has to be official, and that's, that's my, I appreciate that.
Enough. We'd like to try to get over this tonight, which doesn't have.
Okay, so that's thirty-eight, four, and two hundred and thirty-four against. Okay, moving on to Article Seven, Cemetery Perpetual Care Transfer.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article Seven as set forth in the warrant.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded in Article Seven. Do we have any presentation? Yep.
So there's $200,000 in the account. This $150,000 will be used to finish the new section at the Central Cemetery, add a cremation wall, pave the new road in there, and also to pave the road in the Union Cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. This does require a majority vote. Select board voted four to zero in favor of Article Seven. We'll go ahead and open it for debate.
Move the question.
Seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. So please go ahead and open the vote, and we'll give everybody 30 seconds. Okay, please close the vote. All right, and with that, the motion passes with ninety-one point nine five percent for and eight percent against. Okay, and that's two hundred and seventeen, four, and nineteen against. Moving on to Article Eight, North Carver Water District to Repay Town.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Eight as written in the warrant. Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve Article Eight. Do we have any presentation on this?
Yes.
And Mr. Fantasy?
Well, this is to replace the money that was given to the North Carver Water District to purchase the membranes, the filters for the district. During the year, they failed, and at that time, they didn't have the accessibility of their, their monies that were in the account. So we utilized Opera Funds to prepay those membranes so that they can be shipped in, and there was a long delay, and then installed. So part of that was a memorandum of agreement that was developed between North Carver Water District and the town of Carver and the, between the board, the select board and the district commissioners that was signed to replace that money back into the fund with the town. So this is taking that money now and returning it back to.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy. I'll go ahead and open it for debate. Seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this up for a vote. So Article Eight requires a majority vote. The recommendation by the select board was four to zero, and North Carver Water District was three to zero. We'll go ahead and open the vote and give you 30 seconds. Okay, go ahead and close the vote. Okay, and the motion passes with ninety-five percent for, five percent against. So that comes out to two hundred and five, four, and ten against.